Good morning, again, or good afternoon, or whatever this is. Thank you for being with us here at the Town Hall meeting. And if you'll turn in your hymn books to 133, that would be great, 133. You can stand if you want, you can sit if you want, you can clap if you want, you can dance around if you want. We're going to go this, we're going to move this thing a little bit faster than we normally do. What a fellowship, what a joy divine, leaning on the everlasting arms. What a blessedness, what a peace is mine, leaning on the everlasting. Everybody sing, leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Leaning, leaning, leaning on the everlasting arms. Oh, how sweet to walk in this pilgrim way, leaning on the everlasting arms. Oh, how bright the path grows from day to day, leaning on the everlasting. Everybody, leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Come on, leaning, leaning, leaning on the everlasting arms. What have we to dread, what have we to fear? On the everlasting arms, we have blessed feast with our Lord so near. Leaning on the everlasting. Everybody sing, leaning, leaning, safe and secure from all alarms. Leaning, leaning, leaning on the everlasting arms. Just stay there for a moment. Let's pray. Thank you, God, for the gifts of life, for the gifts of this day that you have made this special day. Be with us now as we converse and share and dream and wonder and plan. As we develop how you would like us to be in the world, or continue to do that. In Jesus' name, amen.
Well, welcome, everybody, to the Town Hall for April. My name's Jim Quinn. I think I know just about everybody. I'm the Chair of the Governing Board. And I'd like just to take a second and ask the people who are sitting with me to introduce themselves, although I suspect that you know most or all of them too.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Mahan. I currently serve as Treasurer on the Governing Board.
Kristy Lesher, Governing Board Member.
Corey Talinda, Secretary of the Governing Board.
Jonathan Carol Nollenbeck, Member of the Governing Board.
Beth Wilkins, Ex-officio Member of the Governing Board as Past Chair.
Ike Jordan and Wendy Featherstone are also members of the Governing Board. Ike had a commitment at a charity event in Syracuse today and couldn't be here. And I believe that Wendy is traveling today, same thing, couldn't be here. Everybody probably has a copy of the agenda, I hope. If not, I think Holly might have some copies in the back. Paula has some copies in the, in the front. I'm not going to repeat the agenda. We'll just kind of go through it item by item. And as usual, I think Paula will have a microphone for anyone with questions. Feel free, as we go through this, to ask any questions that you have. This is really an opportunity for us to have interactive discussion with the members of the congregation about some things that are important to all of us. First of all, I'm just going to give a brief update about the kinds of efforts that we're going to be making during the course of 2024 to increase transparency and clarity between the governing, the lay governing organizations of the Church and all the members of the Church. And then we'll move on from there. The first thing you've already seen today, we're going to have these quarterly Town Halls. We'll have one in July, one in October, and then we'll have another one in connection with the Annual Conference in January. Second is a reminder of something we've had for a while, and that's the Governance website. The best way to get to it, because it is sometimes tricky to navigate to it on our website, is to forget about going directly to the website. Simply Google Governance Asbury First, and you will be directed straight to it. And when you're there, you'll find all of our pictures and biographies. Shortly, we will add to them the areas of the Church's efforts that we are the liaisons for, so that, for example, if you had questions about our digital ministries, you would learn to go to Kristy by, you could see that by her, her name. And then also, you can look under the Governing Board itself, and you'll find updates for each of our meetings. You'll find our governance policy. You'll find minutes or summaries of minutes from each of the Governing Board committees. So, for example, Finance, Investment, Outreach, PPRC, Property, all have summaries there. And they're more or less up to date. Sometimes they're a month or so behind because they have to be summarized for that format. And you'll find, again, the names under every person of the organizations that they liaise with, so that if you do have a question, you'll know who to turn to. If you have other questions, you can also go to governance@asburyfirst.org. You can send an email to that address, and it will come to me, and I will see that it gets to the right person. Or you also should feel free to email me. I have a very easy email. It's quinn@genescio.edu. That's such a great email, I kept it even after I retired. So feel free to, to do that. The Governing Board has identified three key areas that we will focus on this year. In the future, when we look at key areas, we'll be getting significant input from the Dream Team's planning activities, which are still underway. And we'll be getting significant input from Michelle, both trust our, trust our new Senior Minister. This year, you'll find that our three priority items are not a big surprise. But we will report on those at these Town Meetings throughout the year. And they are financial wellness, including budgeting, moving up that process, moving up the giving process, identifying potential shortfalls later, being iterative with the different groups about how can we perhaps save money? What money do you need? And accelerating this process forward, so that we're having these discussions in the fall. And also engaging with the, the Giving Team in the fall, hopefully meaning that we can have far fewer surprises when crunch time comes in January and the final touches are being put on the budget. Also, making a robust stewardship effort in general, so that we can reach a point where our finances are long-term sustainable. We also want to make a continued emphasis on membership growth. We've had some great momentum in that regard. And we're going to increase online engagement. We're going to increase opportunities for people who are not members of the Church to get involved with activities in the Church. And we think the selection of Michelle as Senior Pastor will be a draw for many people also. Our third priority is community outreach. No surprise there. But one sentiment that we had was that we've got this wonderful Community Outreach Center, but we can't rest on our laurels. There is much work to be done, and so many different fronts with outreach, that that is a very important priority. And that would include getting more volunteers, getting volunteers from the Church, from outside the Church, getting grant money wherever we can, expanding the type of activities that we can engage in, in the outreach world. And I've already alluded to the fact that another part of our transparency will be starting the budgeting and planning process earlier in the fall. That's something that we expect you'll be hearing much more about as the, as the fall goes forward. I almost said as the semester goes forward, because I used to teach until just recently. Okay, our next item on the agenda is Mark Wright with the discussion about Finance. He is the Chair of the Finance Committee. He is not a member of the Board of Governors, but he might as well be. As hard as he works, he's, he's working on it all the time and supported by John Ormsby, who is here and will provide some background if necessary. Mark?
Thanks, Jim. So Jim sort of stole my opening, what I was hoping was going to be a funny line, which is that I'm not a member of the Governing Board, so if you don't understand or don't agree with anything I say, you can take some comfort in that. But, but truly, you know, the role of the Finance Committee is not to make policy, right? That's, that's what these folks get to do. We're, we're trying to, to keep track of things in an understandable way and make sure they have the information they need to make those decisions. And so let's see, I'm looking up at the screen because I was thinking there might be slides. Darn. Do we have, do we have any slides? Wow. That is so cool. That's a great one. So, but if you could go ahead to the next slide for me. Okay, there's only three slides, so don't worry. And we'll try to get through it in, in 10 minutes. Jim, Jim has a hook for me, so I don't have much time. So the first slide, I'm, I'm saying we're sort of starting at the end. We don't want to hold you in suspense. The purpose of this presentation is to, is to do an overall, a report on the overall combined budget of the Church, which was adopted back at the Church Conference. And so the, and, and if you, if you look at the budget, and you, and if you have the handout, the handy handout that has a lot, a lot more numbers on it, you can follow along the, the overall annual budget provided for a balanced budget, meaning that excess income over expenses, or our, our positive margin, is scheduled to be $3,600. So now what we, what we have in this, in this first slide is a representation of, of budget revenue and expenses and actual revenue and expenses. And you might look at that and say, wow, looks like we're doing great. And, and we are doing fine, but, but maybe not, maybe not super great. What, what this represents, and the reason that revenues are, exceed expenses, both in the budget and in the actual, is because the budget is broken down by quarters. And, and John, with the experience that he has in putting our budget together, can guess when revenues are going to be received and when expenses are going to be spent. And so the first quarter budget is not just the total budget divided by four, right? It's actually based on our expectations. And as you can see, John's expectations were pretty good, because we aren't really very far off the first quarter budget, where if we just divided by three. But what this represents is we get our, we get our income like this. We get a lot of it in the first quarter, and not so much in the second, not so much in the third, and then a lot of it in the fourth, right? Expenses are more like this, right? The expenses come in pretty, pretty evenly across the, the quarters, in our experience. And so that's why, you know, if you look at the, the budget, we thought we were going to have a, a positive margin, or a surplus in the first quarter of $112,000, actually. That's 760 minus 647, I hope, if I wrote, if I did the math right when I took my notes. Our actual Quarter One surplus was 104. So that's a difference of about $8,300. And that difference is just about evenly distributed between the income side and the expense side. And so if we flip over to the, well, one more thing I'll say about that. So $8,300, so it's a negative $8,300 variance, right? And compared to what we thought the budget would be, so 112 compared to 104, that's a little more than 1% on our, on our budget, right? So it, it's, it's not a huge variance. Some people might say we're right on budget, right? I mean, how much closer are you going to get? So it's not a, not a huge cause for concern by any means. But let's break it down a little bit. If we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So we're going to go through expenses first. And we've got expenses broken down into four categories: Personnel, Administration, Ministries, and Property. Again, I'll skip to the end for you. The overall expenses exceeded our budget, so that's a negative variance, by about $4,200, which is not bad, given that the overall, you know, the total expenses is over $600,000. On the Personnel side, we actually were better than budget. And the reason for that is we saved a little bit of money in the course of some property care, staff turnover during the first quarter. So I don't think that's going to be a, a permanent savings, but, but it works into the, you know, we do this on a cash basis, and that's, that's why we saved a little money there. And we also, well, so, and so the difference, by the way, on the Personnel side, is $10,000, about $10,700 positive. The key being the property care turnover. Looking forward for the year, we do expect that overall Personnel costs will be a little bit less than, than what's budgeted, overall churchwide for, for four quarters. And part of the reason for that is that in the COC, there was a social worker who worked for, I think, just about all of the first quarter. She has resigned, and we've decided not to replace that position as it is for right now. That doesn't mean that we're going to save that entire salary, but that, the, the work of the COC is going to be fulfilled in another way, by, as I understand it, expanding the role of another part-time staff person. Now, on the Administration side, that, there's a negative variance here of $4,600 for the first quarter. We are receiving more online giving, which is a great thing, because it comes to us, it comes to us really fast and predictably. Online giving costs a little bit, and we didn't, we didn't project those costs right, right? So some of that $4,600 is, is that the other element that's driving administrative costs up is that we actually ended up paying a portion of the prior year audit. The 22, 2022 audit costs actually came through in the first quarter of 2024. And for that reason, cash basis, again, you know, that, that's an expense that we expected in 2023, but it came in 2024, so there it is. Not a big concern, $4,600. Ministries is even closer to, to budget from an overall perspective, negative about $2,800. That was some catered meals that we, we didn't have budgeted in the first quarter, and the reception for the Kates. Finally, on the Property side, the, there, it's a negative variance there of about $7,400. And that is really mostly timing matters, again, cash basis. So we ended up cleaning the gutters and paying for it sooner than we expected, so that expense fell in the first quarter. And there was also some supplies, janitorial and other supplies that were purchased in, in amounts more than we expected for the first quarter, but they don't expire. You know, we'll use them up, so again, timing, timing matter. Again, just, so again, overall, about a $4,200 negative balance. We're, we're essentially right on budget on the cost side, right? So if we can go to the next slide and the last slide, you'll be glad to know. This is a little bit more detail on the revenue. Now, there is a typo in this slide, and anybody who can find it gets to help put the slides together next time. No, no, I'll point it out to you. So this, this slide breaks down, again, our, on an overall basis, our revenues churchwide were, were about $4,100 under what we had, had expected for the, for the first quarter. And we've broken those down into unrestricted and donor-restricted. And, and so, and, I mean, I might, I'll take a minute to talk about donor-restricted. And so donor-restricted funds are funds that we need to keep separate track of, because the donor, whether it's for the COC, or, or a part of the COC, the storehouse, or for some other, you know, even unrelated outreach purpose. But, but in this case, the donor-restricted funds are funds, revenues coming in, that are restricted for use by the donor to the operations of the, of the outreach and the Outreach Center. So we have to keep track of those separately to make sure that we spend them as we're supposed to, right? The rest of the revenue is unrestricted. And, and some of you know very well that our, we, we show our, we showed our budget, and we will continue to report our budget, sorry. I like to talk with my hands. On, broken down into Fund One, and Fund One is Church Operations. And Fund Two, we've called COC. And, and so this breakdown in revenue reflects that. Now, we don't, we don't show on these slides, and it gets, we can get into the weeds in a hurry. But I just wanted you to understand why we're showing unrestricted and, and donor-restricted. Overall, and I think this point is very important. We have an aggregate budget, right? And the aggregate budget is really what we need to be paying the most attention to, in my humble opinion. Again, you can disagree, they're the decision-makers. But we do have some finance, some financial challenge. You heard me say at the Church Conference that, you know, we have a, we have a sustainability problem. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in, in the, at the end, if we have time. But just to go through this slide quickly. So we showed unrestricted income, there's, as income from contributions. This is pledges, this is non-pledged receipts. And, and that's where the error is, by the way. You can see that the, the budget category, the dark blue, is taller than the light blue, but the number is shorter. That number, instead of 544,369, is actually 554,369. I have no idea how that happened, because it's my understanding of how the software works, you know, it takes the number and puts it into a column. And it did that right, but somehow we got 550, so anyway. So on the contribution side, we are, we are slightly behind, but only very, very slightly. Somewhere, I wrote this down for myself, but maybe I didn't. And then on the, on the other income side, which is the other income, unrestricted income that the Church receives, we were a little bit ahead, right? We were ahead by about, about 2,000. And, and so altogether, our unrestricted revenue was $3,000 less than we thought it would be on, you know, 600, 650,000 or so. So we were pretty darn close to that guess. And it's also true on the donor-restricted side. And on, on the donor-restricted side, this is the Fund Two, COC, the general income on the donor-restricted side, which consists of contributions, primarily of contributions and foundation gifts, was actually slightly above budget. And, and this budget is, is more or less the total divided by four. And on the mission-specific side, slightly below, so, so those numbers came in just $955 under budget. How am I doing on time, Jim? Wrap it up. Okay. So overall, we're tracking close to budget. Budgets are guesses, right? I, I think they're really well-educated guesses, thanks to John. If you don't know John, you know, if you've got a, you've got a question about our finances, John can answer it. And, and trust me when I tell you, our finances are not easy. But with John's help, I think they're a lot easier to explain than they used to be. You know, I mentioned that I have a concern about sustainability. And what I mean by that is that although our overall budget is balanced, right? We have a $3,600 income over expenses churchwide in our budget. That budget and the, the income side of that number contains about $120,000 of income that we would not expect to receive again next year, right? And, and so there's some income that we're going to need to find. It's not just going to, you know, appear if everybody gives the same pledge that they gave this year, for example. And, and so, so there is, and, and so what, what our committee is focused on in every single meeting is, is sustainability, and make sure we're looking at that correctly. And, and by the way, and, and John reminds us, and he's absolutely right, that we really don't necessarily want a budget that is, has $3,600 of income over expense, right? We really want a budget that has a little more room than that, because we don't have unlimited funds to make up those deficits if they happen. And, and we, I told you, budgets are guesses, right? And I, I've made reference to the fact that I know that, and we've received questions from, from the terrific people who are working day in, day out with the outreach ministries. And there's concerns about the, the, the way our budget showed outreach and, and General Church. And we don't have time to get into those today. But that, that outreach budgeting really is a work in process. This is the first year we've shown it that way. And we want to take the time, when we have the time, and I'll, I'll stand in one of these corners and, and answer, you know, any, any more questions today. But we're, we're going to, we have some meetings scheduled. We look forward to talking that through, right? And, you know, I don't think there's a right or wrong. I think it's, you know, we need to hear from the folks on the ground and make sure that we all understand, first of all, you know, what, what the purpose of those fund breakdowns are. And then, you know, we'll turn it over to the Governing Board to figure out what to do about it. No, I'm kidding. But I look forward to those conversations, and that's what I had, Jim.
Diana Carter is going to give an update on the outreach efforts. And I'll pass you the microphone once you're over here.
Hi there, I'm Diana Carter, and as Jim mentioned, I'm the Chair of the New Outreach Committee. So this month represents a really important anniversary in the life of Asbury First. Our Community Outreach Center has now been open for one full year. And even though I'm deeply invested in outreach, when I attended a recent 10-10 Tuesday, I was incredibly impressed with what we're doing over there. So what is 10-10 Tuesday? It's once a month, Pat Dupont and other volunteers at the, at the Outreach Center take people on a tour and give them breakfast and a chance to ask questions about what's going on. So when I was there recently, I learned that for every dollar that goes into the center, two come out in the form of services, food, comfort, and goods. We're not taking some fish and bread and feeding thousands, but we are doubling our, any investment that comes into the center, and I think that's pretty good. Here's a list, prepared by my outreach colleague, Bob Castle, of some outreach happenings in the last year. Under Pat Dupont's leadership, outreach is stronger than ever. The continuing away-forward strategy was adopted, and the consolidation of outreach committees and teams is happening. The Dining and Carrying Center, which had been temporarily relocated, has reopened, thanks to the leadership and tireless efforts of Glenn and Lynn Peck. The Haircut Ministry has expanded and is providing more haircuts than ever. The 10-10 Tuesdays began offering the congregation and community the chance to visit and learn about the COC. And I'd like to recommend, if you do one of these, bring your family, your friends, your neighbors, your coworkers. Let them see what's going on over there, and hopefully decide to contribute in some way. Shannon was hired to help in the Dining Center and Storehouse. She has a unique understanding and relationship with our neighbors, having worked with this population for years before coming to Asbury. Pat has organized Christmas and Ash Wednesday services in the Dining and Carrying Center for our neighbors. So we're sharing with them spiritually too, not just materially. The Community Garden is expanding this growing season with four new beds, bringing that to a total of 14 beds. David Kennedy has organized two upcoming Habitat for Humanity Work Days for Asbury First. And the Habitat for Humanity Home that we help sponsor will be dedicated next month. I also want to add that the Storehouse I also want to add that the storehouse moved and organized a massive amount of goods from their old location into 10-10 and is operating a well-oiled machine, accepting donations, sorting them, and offering them to neighbors. Even during the darkest days of the pandemic, the storehouse found ways to help our neighbors. And since we've emerged from those days, they've developed new, better, more inclusive ways of doing things. So here are just a few select statistics for you to chew on. Since the Community Outreach Center opened, we've served 9,604 meals, given 210 haircuts, provided 5,225 individuals with storehouse goods, and given out 980 bags of groceries. And we've done more, but I just was giving you a sample there. And our efforts don't stop at East Avenue and Granger Place. Asbury's outreach supports families working their way out of the garbage dumps in Nicaragua with Project Chakosente. We support orphaned children in India through the Miracle Children's Garden. We partner with Cameron Community Ministries in Northwest Rochester, which offers after-school programs, a teen center, and a garden. Tutors from Asbury work with students at School 17, and we help with a number of programs there. There are some downsides, though. We hired a wonderful social worker to help neighbors of the outreach center, but she left this March after finding the pay was not enough to help her keep up her skills and because she was concerned about job security with our budget issues. We're trying to figure out the best way to replace her services with our, which our neighbors really need. If you attended the last town meeting in January, you heard about these financial issues. That's when I was surprised to hear that the only non-personnel line item designated for outreach was cut and a helper position was frozen at part-time. The Outreach Committee, as Mark mentioned, has spent the last three months trying to do a deep dive on this new budget, which, with the best of intentions, has been formatted differently. Members of the Outreach Committee are meeting with the governing board and finance committee this week to try to hash some of this out. Our goals include helping to create a more transparent budgeting process, this meeting is part of that effort, and I believe everybody's on the same page about that. To continue doing more good, I ask for your continued support and prayers. You can also help by volunteering, by recruiting more volunteers too, by remembering to throw some canned goods into your market basket to donate, by sharing your gently-worn clothing, and by making a monetary donation earmarked for outreach. Thank you. Yes, I was trying to get in my five minutes, so I eliminated the fact that the bike ministry is starting up again soon for the season.
Patrick Fulford is going to come up now, and as the representative of the Dream Team, bring us up-to-date on what's going on with the long-term strategic planning.
Thank you, Jim. Trying not to trip here. So, good morning. The Dream Team has been meeting for about five months now. We had our kickoff in October. We've been meeting every two weeks since then. We started out as a group of 10. We've had a little attrition. There was this prior senior pastor that just up and left. Maybe you remember him, but we are trucking on. The team is, has a diverse background, both from a personal perspective and from a church perspective, with many different experiences, which are good. I believe we're well-led by Kimberly Jones and Christina K. Kirvong. They've done a wonderful job as our co-chairs. So, so far, in those five months, we've been focused on three areas. First, we've been reviewing our prior strategy. You may remember the dreamscape from 2017 that had "Do More Good, Love, Live, Serve, Repeat," and it had seven values. And those seven values had 17 goals. And we've been going through the 17 goals organized by those seven values and doing a deep dive. We've each taken one area on the committee and said, and examined, what have we accomplished? What still needs to be done? Is there anything that may be a good idea at the time but doesn't need to be focused on anymore going forward? And we really have, we're almost done with that work. We think at the end of that work, we'll be able to check off a number of things that we've completed from the 2017 strategy, but also identify those things that didn't get done. We were making great progress and have made great progress on that strategy. COVID slowed us down a little bit, three years into it. So, that's been good work, and I think we'll finish that up in just a short period of time. The second area that we've been looking at is understanding your input. The Dream Board was up there for some time. You've written down your dreams, 250 dreams. We've been working hard in that area. We've been blessed that one of our teammates, Dawn Reedy, has taken the lead on this. She's put all those dreams in spreadsheets, she's organized them, really helped us understand what those dreams say, what their deeper meanings are. The areas that we've categorized include things you would expect: outreach, inclusion, growth, sustainability, discipleship, fellowship, hospitality, and worship. Those are the categories. It's clear that outreach, in looking at these, continues to be our passion as a church. Also, community building is top of mind. In one way or another, it's been included in 50% of those Dream Board postings. And there were some new and emerging themes that I'll talk about in a moment. So again, thank you to Dawn for her leadership in this area. Without her work in that regard, it would be, it would have been difficult for us to be this far along in our work. The third area is a focus on new and emerging strategies, strategic opportunities for the church. We've identified several areas so far. One is engagement of our expanded online community. David Kennedy has really helped us with a lot of work he's done in getting behind those numbers and who are the people that are here tuning in each and every week, and how can we best engage them? So that's one area. Growing interest in social justice. We've been very involved in social mercy, but the justice side is an area that we can do more in. Campus-wide environmental sustainability is something that we are focused on. And also, as Mark said, our own financial sustainability. So those are areas that we'll be exploring in the months ahead. And finally, mental health awareness, education, and support. So those are the three things we're working on, understanding the prior strategy, the Dream Board, and the emerging strategies. So we'll continue to work on these areas as we meet during the coming months. And one final point, as a member of the PPRC, it was really my pleasure to meet Michelle the week before the announcement. And we engaged her and had a wonderful time, very impressed. And she was aware of the work we were doing on the strategy, and she asked about it. And I basically took her through what I've just taken you through, and she was very excited. She agreed with the approach we're taking, and she indicated that she was very excited to join our team once she's fully on board. So I will, I think you'll do questions at the end.
So I'd like to ask Beth to come down with me now, and we're going to talk about the last subject, which is the update on the senior minister transition. And of course, I want to take an opportunity also to thank Beth for the leadership that she put in all the way through this process and the almost constant communication she's She's in almost, well, she is in daily communication with Michelle, sometimes multiple times a day, as this transition progresses. So both of us, I think, are in a position to answer any questions that you might have had last week when we made announcements from up here but weren't able to take any questions. So that's really what this part of the discussion will be. Would anybody like to ask us anything about the process or about our new senior minister? Well, let me just, I'll seed the questions with just something. And to say that the transition will officially occur on the 1st of July, Michelle's going to come here in May to meet with the staff and some of the lay leadership of the church to do some house hunting with Ann Justice, helping her, and basically learn a little bit more about Rochester. She, for all of her adult life, since she's been a pastor, has lived in parsonages. So this is going to be an opportunity to get into the fun thing called the housing market, but Ann will be a good guide for that. She will not preach the first couple of Sundays in July. There's some other things lined up for that time, and she has a conference that she needs to attend down in, I think it's in Pennsylvania someplace. But Beth, mid-July sometime?
Yeah. The first weekend in July is part of July 4th week, and because many people might be away, we didn't think that was a good opportunity to introduce her to the congregation. So she will speak, I think it's July 13th, it's the, it's the second Sunday in July and the first Sunday after July 4th week. And a moment of personal privilege, I have to say, Jim has done every step of the way with me. We couldn't have done it without each other, and thank you.
Well, I have a question that may be impossible to answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So here at Asbury, we're used to having our pastors stay around a while, which is not sort of the Methodist model. And I've noticed that Michelle grew up in a military family, and so is used to moving around a lot, and I presume from her resume, she's also moved around a lot. What would be your prediction? Are we hoping that she's going to stay for a while? Is that possible? Again, I realize this is a difficult question.
Our anticipation is that, yes, she will stay for quite a while. She was at Central UMC in Endicott for 10 years. And I thought it was 12, it's 10, but that's still quite a substantial period of time. And given all the circumstances, I have every reason to hope that she spends the foreseeable future here. That's certainly the goal. We've not talked about any kind of time limits. It's all subject, of course, to what happens here and what the bishop wants to do. But our assumption was that we were bringing in a pastor for the long term. That's certainly our goal. That's a good question. So how about some more? I did, I'll give you another piece of information, maybe this will seed some thoughts. Those of you interested in outreach, I did a little search to discover what type of outreach ministries Central is engaged in. And one thing that I found was that it's like a microcosm of Asbury in terms of what they do, and I wrote them all down. Need to pull them out here for you. Here we go. Thanks. So they have equivalent of a dining and caring center, but they're only, because they're only a much smaller congregation, they have, provide the community meal one night a week, Thursday nights. They have a clothing center that's similar, but on a much smaller scale to our storehouse. They have a partnership with a school in the Union Endicott School District, which is a very, very distressed school district economically, where they supply supplies and volunteers to that, to that school district, so that they can, you know, help enrich the lives of the children. Michelle explained to us that her church is located in a community that's somewhat similar to Rochester, that it had a big employer, IBM, in this case, market decline over the years, huge, huge employment losses, and that during the 10 years she's been there, it's, it's started out distressed, but it's now extremely distressed economically. And their church is located right in the middle of an area that is extremely distressed, to the extent where, you know, there have been shots taken at the parsonage and things like that. It's a neighborhood where, by definition, you are coming into contact and working with a whole cross-section of the community, not simply the retired IBMers who might come in to the, to the meetings. And I had another couple of items on the list, but I'm going to give this to Beth in case she can remember any while I look for them.
Interestingly, they, their outreach efforts, they actually, after some study, determined that they would be more sustainable by spinning them off into a separate 501(c)(3) organization, because they found that enabled them to leverage more of the, more community involvement than they were able to get from their congregation. She is not sold that that's necessarily the right answer for everybody, but it was a fairly strategic move on their part that they felt enabled them to really increase what they were doing.
A couple of other things I found, and one thing, anybody who was involved in the governance around here about 10 years ago, we'll get a chuckle out of this, they have a church van. So perhaps, perhaps they could, she could show us how we go about getting the church van, because that was such a hard issue for us 10 years ago. But they have a church van, and they take it to a couple of adult residences nearby to pick up parishioners and that use the van for other purposes as well. In terms of a couple of other things that they're doing, they, the current Faith Formation Series is a five or six-week series on Imagine No Racism, and a curriculum developed by the National Church. They're active in different LGBTQ+ areas, early adopter of the reconciling congregation. But for example, I noticed that the Pride Palooza that's going on for the Broom County, Binghamton area community, they're going to have a table at that, and they'll be talking about their church to people attending that event. So they're reaching out to the people who live nearby and reaching out to the LGBTQ+ community in the Binghamton area generally. In short, it's very similar to what we do here. In some ways, they were a step or two ahead of us, but it's much smaller. So I think she'll be very familiar with the types of things that we do. Well, that concludes the program. We'll see you at another one of these in July, but if you have questions, otherwise, you can always go into governance@asburyfirst.org, or you can email me at quinn@geneseo.edu. Thanks for coming out.